In my bubble.
Okay, well, I would say we are. We have a quorum and when it comes, that'll be great, but Kyrin is already here. So we can go ahead and get started. So I think I'm going to call the meeting to order it for 20. And there's Nick, just as I was saying, we're not, we don't need to wait for Nick anymore. There he is. All right. So I'm calling the meeting to order it for 20. And Alex, can you please share the? Yes, that thing. Okay. Roll call of committee members. Chelsea Parker.
Here.
Nick Meyer.
Nick Meyer here.
Kyron Combs.
Kyron Combs here.
Frankie, and I'll mess up your last name. Boiserie.
It's Frankie Boiserie. I, I've been married to my husband for a while now, and I still say it wrong, so I get no. Um, I'm here.
And Maggie Buckley.
Here.
And Susan DeBenequini here. So we have a full quorum. And I will just go ahead and read this whole verse today. This is our school. May peace dwell here. May the rooms be full of contentment. May love abide here, love of one another, love of our school and love of life itself. Let us remember that as many hands build a house, so many hearts build a school. Do we have any audience to address the committee? They have counted to five and with no response, I'll move on to agenda modifications. Any agenda modifications? Okay, there being no agenda modifications, I'll move on to approve special meeting and regular meeting minutes from April 13th, 2021.
I will motion to approve the special and regular meeting minutes from April 13th.
Thank you, Kyrin. I have a motion. Do I have a second?
This is Chelsea. I second.
Kyrin moves. Chelsea seconds to approve the minutes from April 13th. Any further discussion? Okay, roll call vote. Maggie Buckley.
Maggie Buckley, aye.
Frankie Boiserie.
Aye.
Susan DeBenequini, aye. Kyron Combs.
Kyron Combs, aye.
Nick Myers.
Nick Meyer, aye.
And Chelsea Parker.
Aye.
All right. Minutes stand approved as read. Next action item. Okay, financial reports. Jim, over to you.
Okay, we have. I'm off mute. Great. We have the financial presentation. James, the view. For April. Not a lot of changes, you know, kind of what we'd hope at this point in time is that we're not having any surprises. We can still see some changes in these last months, but I think any additional costs, we have enough revenue available that we can take or defer that will be offset. So I don't anticipate any meaningful negative changes, maybe some positives. So we're still working with a surplus in the range of $600,000. Very, very good. Expenses still below budget. Those expenses could go up. We'd add some revenue to offset that. Cash ended strong, 508,000. We haven't taken into account the reopening, so next meeting or next May presentation will have the results of reopening status and the expanded learning plan coming up for review today. So expanded learning will bump into next year's budget reopening would factor into this year's forecast. S R two and definitely three, we're looking at next year and the year beyond. So those are just notes as we consider for the budget and programs in consideration, kind of in summer on significant amount of federal money available for the next couple of years. Key items right now, a lot's starting to happen. The expanded learning opportunities grants needs to be approved for June 1st. So we have those for review and approval this month. The in-person instruction certification is due this month. That's just a matter of filling out the survey on which days in-person instruction was fully available to students and then getting credit accordingly. And then the LCAP and budget to meeting process with the hearing and the adoption. So we want that completed by June and we're starting the conversations on what that 2122 budget should look like. No, no updates this year on enrollment in ADA, although I'll have to get much more comfortable with this once next year starts. Revenues, really no changes, as I mentioned, just kind of an update on. Are full use of the learning loss funds and then additional first round federal funds that we may be able to utilize in this year or else we'll move them to next year, I think. And a significant amount of money available next year and on. It makes sense if we can take credit to take credit this year, but we really want to get more information on what the total costs for the year look like and what the most optimal timing is. Expenses, continuing trend. You know, I kind of say every month, expect expenses to go up these last months and don't be alarmed by that. We're still below budget. We can go all the way to budget and beyond and have funds that we could add to offset that as some of these, some of these pick up. So really, the driver in expenses this year was the distance program. Either some categories were increased, others were decreased. And so as there's more in-person activity, we expect that kind of to shift back to more of a norm. Overall surplus in line with conversations we've been having at this time, 600,000 with the additional 80,000 not included. Fund balance solid over a million, about a third, a third of annual expenses. So we feel good about that, ending this year and that and carry into the next year with additional supports for new costs. Cash, now, now we start to get into, you know, the real down cycle in cash, although April ended strong at 500,000, so real happy about that. Part of that's driven by if some of the accruals and items, we expect to repay, you know, another month goes by and we didn't have to pay them yet. But we have to hang on to that, you know, any minute now that bill's going to come due. We don't want to balance just by holding out a large bill. So we're still, you know, projecting the forecast to have all the accruals repaid by the end of June, pushing the number low. But you know, this kind of moves a little every month between 100, 200, as long as we're in that range, we feel good about it. And I think there's going to be some more cash coming in that like we can't use if SR2 starts trickling in, we can't use that to pay current expenses. But that can be in the bank and you know, making the difference between a 20,000 balance and 120,000 balance, which we feel much better about. But this isn't taking any of that into account. Feel good about the fact that I still have a model saying 200 at the end of June with the full deferrals. I would feel confident saying there won't be any borrow. We'll just continue to cash manage through the deferrals. And whatever news, you know, may revise will be coming out soon, whatever news may revise brings with it, looking at 2122. Lots of compliance items. SP 740 was submitted, the application for next. Key items, we already mentioned the expanded learning, these grants is up. The in-person certification is coming due. And then when we get into June, as mentioned, we're in the LCAP and budget cycle. And then a lot of notes about, one, just checking in. And I know something I, some areas I need to assist with also checking in on policies at the end of the year. Status of compliance items for federal regulations. And, and then just the beginning of registrations and items for 2122. Move. The balance sheet. Are there any questions about the April financial update or the balance sheet or the check register is in there also?
I just wanted to say thank you, Jim. This is Chelsea. And I love that each meeting, we still been able to hear some good news for you about the the outlook for the end of the year, being able to just squeak by with the cash we've got and in spite of the deferrals. So that's very exciting. So thank you.
Yeah, it has. I think a year ago was very much the gloom. And I'm very happy the way the year has gone, the decisions of the organization and just the macro environment. To be able to, like you said, to be able to be here in May, talking about the outlook and be much better outcome than we anticipated.
Okay. Any further questions for Jim? Then I'd like to call for the votes. Can I have a motion to recommend approval of the reports to the board?
Susan, this is Chelsea, and I'd like to make a motion that we recommend board approval for items 2.1.1 through 2.1.6 as presented.
Thank you, Chelsea. Do I have a second on that motion?
I will second Chelsea's motions or motion.
Kyron's seconds. So Chelsea moves, Kyron seconds. We'll call for any further questions. Okay, I'll call for the vote. Kyron.
Kyron Combs, aye.
Chelsea.
Aye.
Nick.
Nick Meyer, aye.
Frankie.
Frankie Boiserie, aye.
Maggie.
Maggie Buckley, aye.
And Susan DeBenequini, aye. Thank you. Okay, the next item we move on to is the revisit of the administrative salary schedule. We were asked to work in, yes.
Susan, before, we have 2.1.7, still the expanded learning opportunities grant plan.
I missed that. I'm sorry. Let's go back to.
That's okay. I thought maybe I missed something, so.
2.1.7. Oh, I don't have that on this agenda. But we did add it to 2.1.7, the expanded learning grants. There it is. It's okay.
Sorry, I think there might have been a change to the agenda when the, I sent the packet out. It's on the agenda either way. I can pull up the old, the one you have, Chelsea. I don't know why, when that. No, that's, that's fine. I actually have both. So whatever the newest one is, we can, we should go with. And so if that's got it under business, is the expanded learning opportunities grant plan is 3.2, is that the newest agenda?
Yeah, that is. Okay.
Perfect. So we will go with that, Susan, and do the administrative salary schedule first.
Thank you, Chelsea. Okay. I'm going to back to the administrative salary schedule then. So we visited this last month and I was asked to look at it again and do the increases based on an annual increase of 3% rather than 2%, so that it would match with the classified salary. So that is the only change that I've made to this with the notations, annual increase 3% in both, under both of the schedules.
And thank you for doing that, Susan. I feel like if we're going to vote on it, I feel like the 3% compared to the 2% is such a small difference that like there's not any reason, it's not like we're staying five and two, we're saying two and three. And so I feel like just comparing the two, it's like couple dollars difference for each thing. It's not like a massive massive difference. So I feel like approving a 3% is more worth it to us, just to make it fair. But that's my personal feeling about it.
Thank you, Frankie. Anyone else have a comment or a question?
I feel like the responsibilities of an administrator were really increased this year and are going to continue to be tough next year. So I would support the 3% as well.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Susan, this is Chelsea. I just, quick question. So we only have years one through six listed on here and then with the notation of annual increase of 3%. And if we had a director stay beyond six years, would that 3% then continue? Or do you top out at six years with no further increases?
So this is based on Chico Unified and BCOE. It's very common to have only about six years in an admin salary. I think that is because admin usually turns over faster than that, than a teacher. Teachers are like, I'm here for 30 years and administrators are there for a shorter period of time. They usually move into more responsible positions or whatever. So so it, I went back and thought about that because you asked last time, Chelsea. But I figured I'd go with what is the standard in the area and then the, we can look again if we need to address beyond six years. Unless we want to do some sort of a caveat that says in the contracts will be looked at after a six-year period or something like that.
Thanks for that, Susan. If that's pretty standard, I just want to make sure that we're not putting ourselves in a position that, you know, if we do have an administrator that is you know, going for their seventh year, the decision to stay or not, you know, is not getting any more money anymore. The tough spot to be in. But if, if having a shorter salary schedule like this, I mean, because I make sense because the expectation is that an administrator will become an administrator after typically a pretty full teaching career. So. Okay.
Yeah.
I think adding the caveat though, that you spoke of, of like, we will reexamine. If it comes to a seventh year, it would be a smart idea because we're not living in a current normal situation. So administrators and different things are staying a little bit longer just due to job security and different things. So I think adding a caveat would be a smart idea.
So we do have the statement longevity to be determined in there. And we can change it to say like, after the sixth year longevity will be examined or something like that. Kind of talking off the top of my head, so open for suggestions.
No, I like that. Or yeah, something, something to that effect or the effect of like, you know, after the sixth year, the, you know, administrator can appeal to the board for continued increases or something like that.
How about after the sixth year, the the salary schedule will be reviewed by the finance committee for, for, for further changes. Does that make?
Yeah, I just think even something in there that states that, you know, a director that desires to stay past the sixth year has the option to, like that it's not automatic, but like the option to be elevated.
Yes, the salary review, request.
Yes. Yes, but and that maybe that could be part of the the annual review done by the board to determine, you know, beyond six years. Yeah.
Okay. Any other questions or comments?
I think those are all really good suggestions. I think anybody that has worked in Susan's position is like staying beyond six years would be a feat in itself. So it's, it is nice. I mean, I'm not saying it would never happen. It's nice to have that in place. So.
Okay, I will call to the question then. And Chelsea, I'm hoping you will write this motion.
I, I can do that. And I'll actually go ahead and make the motion that we recommend the board approves the proposed administrative salary schedule with annual increases of 3%. With to include language for opportunity for increases past six years. Is that sufficient?
Sounds good. Okay. Can I have a second?
I second that.
All right. Chelsea moves and Maggie seconds the approval of the salary schedule. I'll call for the vote. Maggie Buckley.
Maggie Buckley, aye.
Chelsea Parker.
Aye.
Nick.
Nick Meyer, aye.
Frankie.
Frankie Boiserie, aye.
Kyron.
Kyron Combs, aye.
And Susan DeBenequini, aye. All right. Thank you all very much for this work. The next item on the agenda is the expanded learning opportunity grant. I shared this out last night. I went over the details of it a little bit with Jim last week. His suggestion on this grant was we use it more, not just for this specific issue, but for the learning loss funding that we're getting, the ESRS and so forth that we're getting as well. So I have written it to comply with the, the state level expanded learning opportunities grant with the idea that additional funding will, will fit into these same categories. So the first page is the plan description, which talks about all the things we're going to do. And then the second page, actually, I think it's officially the third page, is the actual funding plan. So you can see that there are, there is specific categories and what I worked on is how to fit this 188,000 in while also thinking in terms of what else we were going to do. So extended learning, and this doesn't show my notes, but I will explain to you what I've done. Extended learning in instructional time talks about the increase is focused on summer school, increased hours for kindergarten and after-school program for middle school, increasing that fund. Accelerating process through learning gaps is about moving Ellie into, more into English, supporting additional supports for math and also refocusing funding on movement since we did not have that, that net last year. Integrating student supports to address other barriers. The, we were, we are recruiting Chico State interns to work with family issues like homelessness, chronic absenteeism, emotional wellness and so on. So that is included there. Community learning hub, that's about expanding more technology. We have updated the building to the extent possible with the high-speed internet and other things. So I did not include additional funding there, though that, though if we do decide we need to replace some Chromebooks or so forth, once they're all checked in, we can move those sorts of expenses into other grants. Support for credit deficient students, of course, is not a concern for us, so that doesn't apply to K8. Additional academic services for students are more increases in the paraprofessional work. And training for school staff threw in some money there for professional development as we are looking at for the LCAP, developing, developing a professional development plan and looking at things like increasing our focus on universal design for learning, increasing some training in reading for the lower grade staff and so on. So that's the basis of this expenditure plan with a total of 188,000. This is what is required to be approved by June 1st. So I'm asking this be afforded, be recommended to the board for approval.
Well, I don't mind sending it to the board for approval because it seems like there's a lot of flexibility in it. So if no one objects, I will go ahead and make the motion to bring the expenditure plan for the summer and next year to the board for approval.
I'll second the motion.
Okay. Kyron moves and Frankie seconds that we recommended this to the board for approval. Any further discussion? Hearing none, we'll call for the vote. Nick Meyer.
Nick Meyer, aye.
Kyron Combs.
Kyron Combs, aye.
Chelsea Parker.
Aye.
Maggie.
Aye.
Frankie.
Aye.
And Susan, aye. All right. Thank you very much. That's a big load off for me. All right. What's next on our agenda?
I think that's your report, Susan.
That is, but this is last month's. What else? I haven't, this is not the one I wrote for today. What did I do? I gave you the wrong thing, Alex. I'm sorry.
See if I can hunt down the other one real quick.
All right. What did I do? Okay, I have it under the. Okay, I have it under the April. I got the dates mixed up. So if you look for Aprils, I will share this with you again, Alex.
Is this the one, Susan? It is.
Yes, that is the one.
I found this folder the other day where you hide all your executive directors' reports and it's good for me to know.
Okay, good. Learn something new every day. All right. So this was for this month. The first item on it, of course, is the, was the priority for this month, which is the expanding learning opportunities grant where we just approved it. And the other large piece of work that we as a staff and community have been doing is that local control accountability plan. So we have collected the survey and information and have developed the the questions, at least the first stab of the questions and the actions and goals for the year. So you'll be seeing that next month. We have reached out to classified and received the intentions. We have had all classified intending to return back. So we will offer positions at the board level or ask the board to approve their positions next time. We have gone through, actually, as of yesterday, we have music, the janitor, the health aide, some substitutes and some general aid positions that we are hiring for, for next year. So we'll be in the process of interviews over the next couple of weeks. Alex and I met with the marketing team again on strategies for bringing in more students through social media. So we should be seeing something publicly in the next few weeks. And then Jim and I are also continuing to work on the budget process, getting our numbers and so forth. And we are also looking forward to the May revise that should be coming out here in the next two weeks. That's in a nutshell, what we are doing for finances right now. Any questions? Okay. Then we will go to our closed session. So Jim, we will bid you adieu. And the rest of us will head out, head to closed session.